Okay. I'd like to call to order tonight's meeting of the Gardener Zoning Board of Appeals. Today is Tuesday, January 18th, 2022. It's kind of good to come back into this room after all the time we've been into peri-auditorium, which did have its challenges relative to people speaking and hearing and everything else. So hopefully, we're working our way back to normal. Okay, before we begin, I will go over the ground rules by which this board operates under. In Gardener, three members of the zoning board of appeals must be present to conduct a legal hearing. Applications will normally be heard in a sequence in which they appeared in the public notice. The board is under no obligation to adhere to this sequence. All hearings shall be open to the public, and no person shall be excluded unless he or she is considered to be a hindrance to the workings of the board. An applicant may appear in his or her own behalf or be represented by agent or attorney. The applicant or his or her representative shall present the case to the board. Representatives of the city shall be heard. Abutters to the property present at the hearing shall be heard. Any other interested parties present shall be heard. Those in opposition to the application shall be heard. The board must render its decision regarding variance request within 100 days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. Members of the board who are hearing the case may direct appropriate questions during the hearing. The board regarding special permits must conduct a public hearing within 65 days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board must render its decision within 90 days after the public hearing. All three members of the board must vote in favor for the variance or special permit for it to be granted and approved. The right to appeal the decision of this board is provided for in the zoning act. The information is available in the office of the city clerk. No variance or special permit, or any extension, modification, or renewal thereof shall take effect until notification from the city clerk that 20 days have elapsed after the decision has been filed in that office, and no appeals have been filed and is recorded in registry of deed for the county or district. The burden for supporting the need for the variance or special permit rests with the applicant or representative of the applicant. The board requests that each person identify himself or herself as to name and address before addressing the board. Sitting on tonight's hearing is, to my left, Michael Gary, zoning clerk; to my right, Mr. Randall Haglund, third member; and myself, Raymond LaFawn, as chair. The meeting will be taped. Does anyone object to the taping of this meeting? For the record, no one is objecting to the taping. One question, please silence your cell phones if you do have them to prevent any interruption. Okay, and I'm not actually going to follow the sequence. It'll be pretty close, but I think what I'm going to do is start with the newest case tonight first. And I just want to ask one question. Can everyone hear me here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the first... First case before the board is that of Condor Holmes, care of Michael John Bombachi. And your application for, it's for 163-165 Pine Street, Gardener. Your application to operate a multifamily dwelling at 163-165 Pine Street, Gardener, parcel ID R22-6-8 located in the General III Residential Zoning District is denied as it does not comply with Chapter 675, Attachment 1:1, number five, multifamily dwelling of the city code of Gardener. Due to the building being vacant for longer than two years, this property has lost the status of multifamily by right. The table of uses states that your requested number five requires a special permit issued by the Gardener Zoning Board of Appeals. So I ask either Mr. Bombachi or agent or attorney for presentation.
Yep, so I'm John Bombachi.
Name and address for record, and you can come up and speak closer to microphone if you need.
Yeah, so yeah, so my name is John Bombachi from Andover, Massachusetts, but I'm here to talk about 165 Pine Street in Gardener. Can everyone hear me okay? I'm pretty loud.
You may begin.
So we submit an application for a special permit to restore this building. It was a former eight-unit fire damage property, been vacant for about 10 years. We put together a parking plan. We revised that parking plan, but I do have some of the information up here just so we can have a visual. I wasn't sure what questions were going to be coming up, so I probably have too much material. But a little bit about us, so we run a real estate team in Massachusetts. We own about 300 units, most of which are in Mole. We're in the process of coming out here. We like Gardener a lot. We own quite a few multifamilies in the area, and we're trying to grow the presence quite a bit. We tend to buy some of the ugliest properties we can find and then try to restore them. We like the multifamily class. We have a lot of experience doing it. I've been doing it for about 10 years now. We have about 150 units in Mole, which is our biggest demographic right now, but we have 49 units closed and pending here in Gardener, and we manage a few units for, to our clients. So we do have a pretty good presence in the area, and we're just looking to become a little bit more, a little bit more present in the community. We have a good reputation with past clients and current residents. We also operate our own management company, so we do a lot of the stuff in-house. We have a number of reviews online. We're public. We're, you know, we're in the phase where we primarily act as real estate agents on a lot of deals, so we do have a pretty good reputation. Reputation is a lot to us. You can find public information about us all over the web, which just kind of, you know, hopefully helps if you're looking for credibility. This is the property in question. It's been vacant for about 10 years. It was a fire damaged multifamily building on Pine Street. It was an eight-unit, 16 beds, eight baths, assessed at $116,000 today. We purchased it back in September, and then we've been working on the application ever since. It's been a pretty, you know, long project, and we haven't even got started yet. This is kind of the plan for it. This is what we do with a lot of our units. We tend to target mid-grade condo finishes. We like to be, you know, nice, clean, durable apartments that have good durability. We have a budget of over $550,000. We're marked for this. Financing is in place. Bank's ready to go. We just need the building permits to get started. We tend to do granite counters, LVP flooring, try to do nice quality durable finishes throughout. This building would be 100% sprinklered, fire panelled. We also make it light safe. Almost all of our buildings have like compliance certificates, which is important in the state of Massachusetts. We tend to work with a lot of, a lot of areas that want those lights searched just because they can be difficult to find in the multifamily space. This is the current floor plan, so they are all true two bedrooms. They have two bedrooms in the back, full kitchen, bathroom in the middle, and then a full living room up front. They're not efficiency apartments. They're not, you know, trying to cram too many people into too little space. They're about 750 square feet each, and we would be restoring the current floor plan. We wouldn't be touching structural. It would be like a rip and replace throughout, so the schedule is pretty, you know, concise. We would make pretty good movement on the building. It's been vacant 10 years, but assuming we get the permit, we're hoping to be done with it in about four months. We have a construction crew, you know, on standby, and they move pretty quickly through the project, so we wouldn't be standstill. We would be looking to turn the building around pretty quickly. One of the things that's come up is the parking plan, so we put a revised parking plan in there. This is the problem with the property is current code requires two spots per unit. We worked on this a lot. The site plan is going to cost us over $50,000 in itself just to kind of get as many spaces to the property as we possibly can. We ended up with 11 spaces. Nine of them are standard size, nine, nine and a half by 18 feet. Two of them were asking for an exception for compact, where we got them to eight feet instead of nine and a half, so a little bit skinnier than code, but I think there is a, you know, a bylaw for compact spots. The idea would be to, would be one dedicated spot per unit and then have three extra spots to be assigned on a first-time, first-to-third basis to the residents. There's plenty of on-street parking, but obviously, we're worried about snow emergencies, things like that, and so this was the best parking plan we could come up with, given the parameters of the building, and I think this was probably the primary reason why the building sat vacant for as long as it did. This is an expensive parking lot, but we're hoping that it is enough to help the building come back to life. And then, these are some of the other buildings we either have under contract or in the process of closing. We mentioned, you know, depending on how the zoning board finds, we might be able to borrow spots from ourselves or potentially lease spots from a neighbor, but obviously, we do prefer to keep everything confined within the original property just because it would make things a lot easier for the project. We do, you know, we are expanding pretty quickly. We are, you know, acquiring other properties in the area. Nothing that's close enough. We have one building across the street under contract, but the seller got cold feet, so we're working on other alternatives, but one of the neighbors has offered up to maybe lease spots. I don't particularly like leasing spots unless I absolutely have to, and so we wanted to bring the appeal to the zoning board. You know, we'll probably have to do a site visit, get everybody out there and not, you know, looking at it. Ideally, we would keep everything, you know, within the property. I don't want to go to neighboring properties if I don't have to, but obviously, you know, the primary goal is to just be able to restore the building to what it was. Some of the things that we can get out of it is, you know, the property's been a light property for a while. We are helping eight residents relocate from a property on Nickel Street. We've been kind of chopping them around, showing them some of our vacant units and things like that. Four of them need first-floor living. This property would have four first-floor living spaces, which is scarce in the city. We've been trying to show them, you know, units without stairs. They're very hard to come by. This building would provide four of them just because of the grade. One thing to note here is two of the residents that would want to move into this building that are waiting for the building to be done, they both want two bedroom units, they both don't have the ability to do stairs, and they both only have one car. And so part of the question is, you know, I know that the code's calling for two cars per unit. I do think the four first-floor livings with limited stairs could be rented to very similar people that are looking for a little bit of space but don't necessarily need the two cars. We would obviously, you know, market the property appropriately, make sure people know this apartment comes with one car, and make sure that we're managing the street appropriately. But the biggest holdup with the property is just the parking plan, which was the point of the deal. I know that was a lot, probably too much information, but I wanted to run through it and then, you know, let me know what questions you guys have.
Okay, first, I'll ask my members, do you have any questions at this point?
What are you planning for exterior lighting?
So we'd be doing quite a bit exterior lighting. We have, we would have the parking lot illuminated at night. We would have the side and the front and the stairwell is all illuminated. Normally, we just wire them into the house panel and just set them on a timer. We do it at almost all of our properties for safety insurance reasons. I spent 10 years in insurance, and so liability is a big thing on my mind, especially with the snow, and so lighting is definitely something we take into account in a lot of our buildings.
Can you go back to the site plan that you had?
Yes, I figured that was going to be the highlight.
Okay, yeah, that's a good one to have. You show three areas, two primarily for snow storage in the back lot. It looks like you have a segmented block wall going in behind lots, behind parking spaces one through six. What is that, snow going to be pushed over that wall?
Yeah, so there's quite a bit of, quite a bit of room back there, so when we do the fill, well, actually, we'll fill past where the concrete plow will come, just to level it off the hill a little bit, and then we would be pushing snow over the concrete wall, you know, when it comes in. We would probably keep a little bit on this side just because you can't push it all over, but we would definitely be using it for snow storage.
With vehicles parked in spots one through six, how are you going to get snow to that store, snow storage area?
So normally, what we do is we would, we would ask the residents to move cars during the, you know, when the snow plow comes out. Normally, what happens is we come and we clear the mo, as much as a lot as possible can, probably pushing the snow into the top for the time being. Give them a couple of hours to move the cars, then bring the plow back and clean out the spots. I mean, at the end of the day, when the cars sit in a lot for any amount of time, the snow just becomes unmanageable because it all freezes. And so normally, we do kind of plan around, you know, a primary, a preliminary plow, and then the residents move the cars, and then we finish cleaning out the lot.
How do you trash, is that the two blower?
Yep, so we're thinking two, three, or four-yard trash barrels that would be movable, so then that way, we could, you know, the trash company didn't come down the hill, move them so that they could get access to them without it being too much of a pain for the truck to turn around.
Michael?
No, he hit mine.
We did, we did the best we could with the, with the lot that we're working with. I wish we had a little bit more space to fit a couple of more cars and a cleaner way to get to the garbage, but this was, this is what we worked on with the site plan along with our property manager, just to make sure we, we gave it as much thought as we could.
As you were renting the units, say you get to the last unit, you get one unit left, you only have one parking space, dedicated parking space left, and that person or family, whoever has two cars, what do you do?
I mean, there's one dedicated parking space. If we have a nearby property with extra space, they could park there during the snow emergency. Otherwise, you know, they would have to use one of the public lots or find another place to put it during the snow. Pine Street has a lot of off-street parking most of the time, but it's really the snow, the snow emergencies where it becomes a big problem on the street.
Can you go back to Ariel? I just want to, I was trying to see where this is located. Okay, so it's south of Cross Street, so it's...
The red cross is Pine Street. I don't know if that's apparent.
Yeah, the red cross is your property location, so it's a fair distance down from Cross Street, so it's a decent walk to the public parking lot.
But if they had two cars, in theory, someone could drive it down, the other one could go pick them up, right? They wouldn't have to walk to drop off the car. They could arrange some sort of, you know, self-contained shuttle system with the other member of the family. Not ideal, but that would be in like the case that someone really needed the apartment and needed that extra car.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, an easy solution to state, but if you have somebody working a night shift and they get off at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, and they have to park, you know, at one of the off-site spaces, I doubt somebody's going to get up and go get them, you know, at that time. But could you detail, you said you've got some abutters that are willing to lease some spaces? Where that is and how many spaces they're looking at potentially leasing?
So the abutter right next door is another abandoned property. We were working on trying to acquire it, 170...
157.
157, thank you, 157. We're working on trying to acquire it, but we're unable to, but we're hoping to do a lease for a couple of spaces there as an as-needed basis.
And how long would you ask for the lease to extend?
Probably at least 10 years, just to make sure that we have stability for the property.
Mike?
No.
All right. All right, you talked about snow storage, and depending on the snow we get, would you be open to removing or taking snow off the property if, you know, sometimes we've got some pretty heavy storms and it accumulates, and there's no place to put it? So would that be hauled away?
Yeah, I mean, if we don't have a place to store, I mean, we don't really have any other option. We don't have the luxury at this property to have a lot of extra space for, so we have to haul it away.
I'm going to ask you if you reviewed our zoning ordinance, you know, under the special permit, there's nine issues that you have to address. You probably have addressed them already in your presentation, but if you would go through them and address them individually?
I don't have my credit card available to borrow.
You want your answers?
Please, yeah. I should have printed out a copy for myself. I apologize.
Do you want to wing it?
Yep, so the first one, the proposal should be suitably located in the neighborhood. So yeah, so suitably located and compatible with the neighborhood character and existing uses of the permanent use. So a lot of the buildings are multifamilies in the area. This building is, you know, looking to be restored to what it once was. I think it would fit in well with the rest of the area, especially the time we got done with it. It would be, hopefully, one of the nicer buildings on Pine Street. The proposal does provide convenience and safe vector and pedestrian movement within the site and in relationship to the adjacent streets and property and improvement, so we would, we'd keep the whole area safe. The proposal does provide adequate space for off-street parking based off what we talked about. We know we're a little bit short on what we're, what we're looking for, but it would have the ability to load and unload vehicles as well as to do normal operations and like pick up the trash and remove the snow. The proposal does provide adequate and appropriate facilities and utilities for proper operation and proposal use of disposition such as the drainage and surface water. There is quite a bit of fill at the end of the parking lot, which allow the water to drain without causing a problem for the rest of the area. It is a pretty big, pretty big lot after the fact. It's just the grading gets a little bit tough in terms of parking. The proposal does not constitute a nuisance due to any pollution, erosion, flood, noise, odor, dust, vibrations, lights, anything of that. If anything, I think we're hoping to solve a problem with a property that's been vacant for a while. Hopefully, it's not, you know, a nuisance to the surrounding area. The proposal does not create an inconvenience or hazard to the abutters. If anything, you know, again, we're trying to take a abandoned building and make it safer. The proposal does not create, or the proposal is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter, so again, we're trying to restore a building that was, that was once there. The proposal should not be detrimentally impact the city services, tax base, or employment. I actually think, you know, based on the proposal, that the tax rate will actually go up quite a bit. The building's only assessed at 116. If we're putting 550 into it, I think you're going to hit us with a pretty good assessment when we're done. The proposal doesn't constitute with any of the community development or plan. The proposal is consistent with community development plans, so again, it's property we're hoping to restore and make better. The proposal may be on a property subject to the zoning map addendum and accompanied by engineered site plan, so we did have the site plan by a certified engineer. Is that good? Any questions?
I just have, well, it's not pertinent to the, well, it isn't way pertinent to those nine, but if you have viewed that neighborhood, how many multifamilies are in there?
Quite a few. We actually had a bunch under contract. There's a four-family across the street, three-family next door, a couple other multifamilies that have been up for sale over the last six months, including actually, we own Washington Street, which is a five-family not that far away, and I believe all the abutters around that property are also multifamilies as well.
So the blue ones are property that you currently own, or...
The blue ones are the ones that we either own or are in the process or under contract. The black one was the one that we thought we were going to have in preparation of this meeting, which would have made us feel a little bit more better about the parking situation, but we weren't able to get that one over the finish line, and the seller decided to pull back.
And you said there are 49 that you have or in the process of acquiring?
49 that we either own already or will own by the end of February.
For the ones that you own, are there any outstanding code issues that we...
Not that we know of. We're restoring 45 Greenwood, which was another light property that had prior code violations with the previous owner, but we don't have any violations, and it's on track to be completed shortly. The rest of them, I, we don't, we don't have any outstanding code violations.
Okay. Now, you talked about lighting for the traffic, the vehicles, parking, et cetera. Nowhere in this plan do I see a lighting plan of where they'll be located, et cetera.
No, and honestly, we didn't put it in there. Normally, we do big floodlights off of the exterior of the building on all sides, and we do them on motion central lights surrounding where the main doors are. We could certainly put where we would expect to put the floodlights on here. We could get the, I mean, we'd probably want to work with the fire prevention company as well and just make sure that we're in line with what they'd be looking for.
Okay, if you could send just an updated of where your proposed lighting is going to be located?
Sure. Yeah, that should be, should be relatively simple.
Okay. Any more questions, Randy, right now?
Well, with, and with the light plan, just be cognizant of Dark Skies Initiative. If, you know, you have floodlights in the back of the property pointing towards your parking area, is there going to be a light wash onto the property in back, which I guess, I don't know if that's Derby Lane or...
It is. There isn't any abutter in the back. It ends up being, we could actually see it from Main Street, so it actually ends up popping off into the back of Main Street there. But we'll definitely keep that in mind because, you know, we don't want to become an eyesore for, for you guys, because you might actually be able to see the property from here at night if we did something stupid.
Okay, in terms of water flow on your, from your building to the sides, right to your batuminous concrete driveway, how are you going to handle the water coming off the roof and everything else and coming down from the back, you know, if it is an incline? You're going to have water draining down, especially in the winter here regarding ice and freezing. What is your game plan for that?
Yeah, so we would plan to kind of run it along the exterior to the back, so we do have a gap between where we propose to put the concrete blocks and then where the rest of it is, so we would put, you know, gutters on the, on the main building and kind of, and run that under the driveway and just try to get it around the concrete barrier. And then normally, when we, when we do these types of things, we do leave a significant amount of gravel at the end of, you know, of the paving, just so that the water has a chance to dissipate a little bit before it runs off the back of the driveway.
And you'll have it running away from any abutters and up before causing water to flow onto an abutters property?
Correct, yep. It'll be running, it'll be running into the rest of our land in the back, so we'll be keeping it all contained within the property.
Mike?
Good question.
No, not right now.
Anything else right now?
No.
Okay, our members are set right now. Are there any representatives to speak regarding this application?
I'm an abutter.
Well, yes, there's a representative of the city right now. Any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Be it known there are no representatives from the city to speak? Any abutters to the property who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any abutters to the property who'd like to speak in favor of this application? No one to speak in favor? Is there any abutters who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Sir?
So I have a concern about...
Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Aaron Holm, and I live at, well, I own the house next door at 157 Pine Street, and I'm concerned with the open staircases that there is on, about my side. Being high up, the, I'm concerned with people walking up and down and sitting outside and talking, because I'm very close, I'm within ear of that hole. And on the third floor there, they can see my roof line very easily. They can throw things, I'm concerned with people throwing things and onto my roof and stuff. That's my concern. I would like to see them close that in.
Sir, allow you if you want to make a comment to that at this point?
Yeah, so we may have to take the stairs down or rebuild them, so that's still kind of a question out there. If we're rebuilding them, we can certainly address that situation. We've, and actually, to your point, you know, if it turns out to be a problem, we could definitely enclose them. I mean, it's not that hard to put up, you know, to, when we do the siding, to just side that into the building, so then you wouldn't have to worry about people, you know, being, you wouldn't have to be able to see people when they're going up and down the staircase.
Now, in your lease, do you prohibit gas grills or anything like that?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we would, we would actually pull the gas out of the property. Everything would be, you know, electric, high efficiency, mini splits.
No, but I mean barbecues.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but yeah.
I can envision somebody setting up a barbecue on one of the floors.
No, so anytime we see a grill on one of our properties, we react pretty quickly. The last thing we need is someone melting new siding, let alone the fire safety stuff, especially with a sprinkler. especially with a sprinkler building like that, wouldn't be something we would encourage.
Would you provide an area to the rear of that property? I know it looks kind of tight, but if someone has a grill, that prefers to have a grill, that they would have just a small, I'll call it a rec area where they could put grills, you know, have a table and sit outside if they wish?
So there might be space where the snow is going to go when that's all taken care of, so what we plan to do is when we fill this in, we actually are planning to fill this in to be at the same grade, and so if someone wanted to, they could use that for rec space. It wouldn't be a tunnel room, but it would be a little bit of green space if needed.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, in my mind referencing another property that we saw, and they, same, sort of same situation, pretty tight, but they had a little corner, and they just sort of put some pavers down, and, you know, the tenants put a couple of gas grills there, and that's where they enjoyed the nice weather during the summer and fall.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, it's just an idea.
Yeah, no, it's a good one.
Okay. Are there any other abutters who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Any other abutters who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Any interested parties who would like to speak, I'm going to say, in favor or in opposition to this application? Any interested parties to speak either in favor or in opposition to this application? For the record, nobody, no one to speak? Okay, I'll open it up again, Randy and Mike. Questions or comments?
Site visit.
Yep. Nothing?
No.
Okay, so definitely, we would like to do a site visit and see the property.
Sure.
If you do have a property nearby that maybe is going to have parking, we can just take a quick glance at that one while they are.
Okay.
Okay, what's a good time for you, because we have to coordinate three schedules here? Generally, we like to do them on a Saturday in the morning.
Yeah, we can make that work. Are we not this Saturday, but maybe next Saturday or the Saturday after, whatever your schedule allows?
Well, what does your schedule look like for this Saturday, next Saturday, and the Saturday after?
So I can, this Saturday would be a little bit tough, but we could certainly do-
I can't do this Saturday.
Okay.
The 29th or the 5th.
All right, why don't we keep those days open in the morning?
I can't do the 5th.
Okay.
All right, so it probably looks like the 29th, and we'll have Rachel contact you. Generally, 8:30, 9 o'clock is when we come.
Okay.
And she will coordinate it.
Okay.
And we'll do that. So not be closing your case, we're going to keep your application, your case, open until after we see the site visit, et cetera.
Perfect.
So, Randy, Michael, any questions?
No, no.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and we're going to move on to the next case.
Awesome, thank you.
Can I have my packet back?
Yes, I was just going to do that. Thank you for lending it to me.
Thank you. Randy? That's not mine.
I'll just make a comment to the number of people here. Generally, we do a site visit. The owner of the property, et cetera, has the option to allow you onto the site or not. So really, when we get there, if there are a number of people who want to go onto the site at the same time and look and view, the owner or the applicant would have to provide his approval to do that. If not, then you just, you'd have to stay off the property while we do the site visit, I just want to let you know. Okay, just give us a minute so I can get ready for the next one. Okay, the next case before the board is a continuation, and this is case number 2021-08-03, Harbor Classic Homes for Zero Clock Street Open Space Development, and it's case 2021-08-04, variance, both variances, Harbor Classic Homes, Zero Century Way Open Space Development. So agent or attorney, Mr. Peter Campabasso, you're going to be representing again tonight?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Campabasso. Peter Campabasso, one of the Castle Harbor Classic Homes.
If you've got, I know I have some documents here.
What I did, the plans that we, and the documents that we have submitted, I did have the engineer make a change to show the roadway width as 28 feet, because I know that you had mentioned that at the last meeting. That is the Clock Street entrance, and this is the Century Way entrance. And then, what I also did, just to identify the tracks that we're concerned with, based on the assessors' map and the topographical plan that was submitted to the planning board. So essentially, it's the applicant's position that, and I did have a chance to review the city solicitor's opinion, I did get that, and I understand he's differentiating between the permitted use with the open space. The only thing I think we should clarify, and I didn't have a chance to speak directly with him, the small track that's off of Clock Street, that little odd-shaped, sort of triangular lot that slants to the left or to the right, that's actually in a SFR1 zone, not GR3 zone.
Okay.
So the small track off of Clock Street is in the SFR1 zone. That's, the entire track itself consists of approximately 88 acres. Of the 88 acres, approximately 85, or about 96% of the lot, is in the RR2 zone, and the zoning line runs along the back edge of the Century Way development. So you can see, based on this plan? The Clock Street lot, the RR2 zoning line runs along this boundary line edge on the back of these properties, all the way across here. Got it?
Yeah, I'm just trying to follow which one you're on.
So this section here, off of the Century Way entrance, it's approximately a three-acre lot, but the majority of the land is behind, I think those are single-family homes that were developed, could be a part of the condominium project. So the shape of the lot, it's an odd-shaped lot because of the limited frontage, and it's behind all of the development. And in addition to the odd shape, the topography on the Century Way side, if you look at the Century Way Road Entrance Plan, there's probably about an eight to a 10-foot, very steep drop in this area over here, above those two homes, three homes. So it's a very steep grade. As far, so because of the way the lot is shaped, the lack of frontage, the amount of land that's in the RR2 zone, it imposes a substantial hardship on this particular parcel that's unique to this parcel but doesn't really affect the other homes in the area, because they're either all in the SFR1 single-family district or they're in the GR3 district. So it's clearly unique to this parcel of property. The relief that we're requesting is to allow the roadway entrances to go into the back so we can propose a single-family open space residential development. And based on the zoning and the land itself, it's probably the best use of the land since the city definitely has areas back that are close to the water and the reservoir that they have protection concerns or conservation concerns. So to be able to utilize that area, that way, would not be a detriment to the public, especially because the use would be consistent with all of the use that's in this general area. It's all single-family homes, except for the condominiums. And last point, which I think is probably the most important, is the variance would not, the variance, if you granted the variances, it would derogate from the zoning bylaw, because clearly the bylaw is drafted. The open space residential development is only allowed by special permit from the planning board, and it's single-family homes, so it's not like we're proposing something that's not consistent with the general nature of the area. But it would allow for the applicant in the town to approve a project that's most consistent with what the bylaw really wants to see happen up there. So I think if you, based on the site, how the lot is configured, the fact that we have to go before the planning board, the special permit process is going to require public hearings, the project will be thoroughly reviewed, it's unlikely that they're going to allow a project where we would create hazard to the general area, and I think it's the best use of the land, consistent with the bylaw. We would ask that you approve both the variance request for the Clock Street entrance and the variance request for the Century Way entrance.
Okay.
We'll answer any questions of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Campabasso. For the record, I'm going to read the letter to Mr. Campabasso referred to from the City of Gardner Law Department. It is now a public document that came in, the meeting is not closed, so it's part of the file. It's dated December 29, 2021, addressed to Ray LaFawn Chair, Gardner Zoning Board of Appeals, 95 Pleasant Street, Gardner, Mass., regarding Century Way and Clock Street variance. It is timestamped January 3, 2022. Dear Chairman LaFawn, I am writing in response to your request that the law department review the submissions of the applicants for a variance or being sought to develop land off Century Way and Clock Street as open space residential development. Currently, the City of Gardner allows an open space residential development by special permit in RR2 Zone District. The City of Gardner Planning Board is a special permit granting authority for the open space residential developments. The property in question is zoned RR2. However, the applicant owns two additional streets which are adjacent to the property on which the open space residential development to be, excuse me, to be constructed and provide the access and public wave frontage for the OSRD parcel. These two parcels, M32-6-10 and M37-21-42, are zoned General Residential 3, G3. An open space residential development is not permitted in Zone G3 and would require a variance from the ZBA. The applicant has presented the argument that an open space residential development is by nature a residential development and therefore should be permitted in any zone district which allows single-family residential houses to be constructed. This argument is, if substantiated, would eliminate any need for a variance for parcels M32-6-10 and M37-21-42 as single-family homes are permitted as a matter of right in District Zone G3. This is, in the law department's opinion, an oversimplification of the issues pertaining to open space residential developments and the applicability of the City of Gardner zoning ordinances. Open space residential developments are creatures of statute, see MGLC 40A Paragraph 1A. The creation of open space residential developments by the legislature essentially replaced the former cluster developments. The legislature specifically provided that an open space residential development shall be permitted only on a plot of land of such minimum size as a zoning ordinance or bylaw may specify, which is divided into building lots with dimensional control, density, and use regulation restrictions for such building lots varying from those otherwise permitted by ordinance or bylaw in open land, MGLC 40A Paragraph 1A. Therefore, it is clear that the legislature intended that municipalities could differentiate between typical residential construction and open space residential development by way of zoning ordinances and bylaws. The primary issue, therefore, is whether or not the applicant should proceed with the variance application for parcels M32-6-10 and M37-21-42, as the residential access roadways to the open space residential development will be over two parcels. It is the law department's opinion that the variance application process is the appropriate means of seeking relief from City of Gardner zoning ordinance prohibition of developing an open space residential development in District Zone G3. Please let me know if the board has any additional questions or comments regarding this matter. Very truly yours, John M. Flick, carbon copy, Building Department. Okay. I'm going to ask my members if you have any questions of Attorney Campabasso at this time?
Not at this time.
Randy?
Attorney Campabasso, have you or your clients done the analysis of how many dwelling units are permitted under the open space versus if it was done as a conventional subdivision under residential two?
We have started that, we haven't completed that analysis. When the project was first presented to the planning board, we were using a different engineering firm, and we have since changed engineers, engineering firms. We're now using Fulton and Bain, and we're trying to have them prepare that analysis for us, so that when we do submit the-
Because you will need it for the application to the planning board.
In order to submit the special permit application, one of the requirements is that you file a draft, or if you will, or a traditional grid plan that shows what can be done by right versus what can be done under the open space.
And that's the question I'm asking. So you question-
So you questioned, the answer then is no, you haven't completed that calculation yet?
Based on what I've been told, the preliminary analysis is that I think the traditional grid would allow something along the lines of 26 to 30 lots. And under the open space, it gets a little complicated with the way you have to calculate, taking out the wetland areas and the roadway areas and the detention basin areas. We're probably looking at something in the vicinity of 60 to 80 lots. Now, again, based on my conversations with the engineers at Whitman and Bingham, they've been doing survey work, they've been doing some topographical work. We haven't actually done that hard engineering where we know what the difference of actual lots that could be done by a single-family residential development, traditional in an open space.
Michael? Questions? I have no further questions. I will open it up to the floor for something very brief because Mr. Campabasso, over several meetings, have presented all the cases, information, drawings, casework, et cetera. Really, we went forward to this one because we were awaiting the interpretation from the city solicitor. And Mr. Campabasso informed us that there was a couple of minor changes on the drawing. So those two requirements have been met. So really, I don't want to get into a full meeting on this because we have gone through it already over several months. But if you have a question that's new, pertinent, I allow it to be asked. And you've got to keep in mind that the proposal that they are looking at must go to the planning board. The proposal before us tonight regards only those two small sections of Century Way and Clark Street, excuse me, and Century Way. That's all that's before this board tonight. So I'll ask, does anyone have any question? I'm not asking for an opinion if you're in favor or against. Just a pertinent question to the case. Sir?
Lee Bradley. I live at 105 Brookside Drive. We're right behind, right in front of where one of these roads are going in. So this area right here that you have marked out?
Why don't you come up so he can see that?
Are there any homes going to be going in there?
No.
So you're just going to put the road in behind that and go in there?
Correct.
I still...
And there wouldn't be homes to the left and back of those two lots?
Well, they're dwellings, right? So they couldn't go there anyway.
In this area right here.
Oh, okay.
Behind the homes on Century Way?
Yes.
You would not put dwellings?
Because I'm here.
So no dwellings are going to be in the general residential zone?
There won't be any, there's no proposal to include residential homes on the Clark Street SFR1 portion or on the Century Way G3 portion. All of the homes will be in the RR2 zone. Yes.
I just still have big issues with the overcrowd of that area, the water, the maintaining of it, police, fire, you know, everybody else. And we can't even keep up with what's going on car-wise in the neighborhood as it is. You know, people blow the stop sign right here at Century Way and Brookside. They don't, just don't care. So if you're going to add more cars to Clark Street to come down that way?
Right, and I'm just going to subject here. I appreciate your concerns. That will be under the auspices of the planning board. If you have concerns about that, that will be your opportunity to meet when the planning board meets and state your views and your information, facts, et cetera. And that's, the planning board will handle that.
And that top arc fee that he was talking about, the eight to 10 feet, I would think it's a little bit more than that, looking at my back portion.
Okay. And that's an issue also, if you want, bring it up with the planning board if it goes before the planning board. Okay, board members, any further questions or comments? And also, I've had a couple of calls regarding traffic study on this property, well, the two parcels. They're great questions for the planning board because we're not looking at a traffic study for, you know, 150 feet of roadway. And also, the other issue that came up was, and it was brought up last meeting, about the width of the road. We had brought up the issue of 28 feet. The plan showed...
24.
50 feet.
The roadway width was 50 feet.
Yep.
On the plans that we have submitted previously, the actual roadway width itself was 24 feet.
Correct.
On the plans I, we revised tonight, it showed it as 28 feet.
Okay. The comment I was going to make, that since this, I mean, if we do in favor, vote these variances, then a condition will be put in that the developer will comply with the road as determined by the planning board. And because I know the roadways are under study now in the City of Gardner. So we're not going to tie something in that may be a problem down the road or we would just, we're going to, we would put the burden on the planning board that they would determine how wide the road would be to comply to specs for construction. Okay? So I just want to make that clear.
If I could make just one last point, especially to the...
One more.
To the residents. If the board were to grant the variances tonight, that does not by any stretch approve the proposal. It just gives the applicant the opportunity to submit a proposed open-space plan to the planning board. The plan will be thoroughly reviewed by the planning board. We've already had some preliminary discussions. I anticipate that there will be concerns that will have to be addressed. I anticipate that the residents will be actively involved in watching what we do. So for tonight's purposes, I just, I can't stress that it just gives the applicant the opportunity to present an open-space proposal which the bylaw promotes in this zone. So it would be a permitted use. It just gives them the opportunity to present it and to have it be reviewed.
Just to validate your comment, just to remind everybody, the board is looking at the request for a small section of the road. Just have a variance for the road, that's it. We are not granting, if we grant anything, we are not granting anything for the residential development. This meeting has nothing to do with the residential development. It's only focusing on the road. Okay, any other questions, Randy?
So is that a road that's going to be maintained by the city or by the property?
Be handled by the planning board.
The planning board thing too?
That will come up as an issue before the planning board.
Robert Chicklin, 300 Clark Street, Gardner, Mass. How long is a variance good for?
The variance?
Or they have to enact on it?
They have to show some activity within one year.
One year.
If they do not, for specific reasons, and I mean not just the lack of inactivity.
Correct.
If they have a problem of getting equipment in there or hiring equipment and for a valid reason, they can apply for an extension of six months.
So if it goes through the variance, it's one year, just to be correct. And after that one year, is it going to apply for an extension for six months?
Let's put it this way, if they don't do anything for some reason, that's, you know, the board have to look at and consider. But if they just didn't get around to doing anything, one year. If they have something, they can't get equipment in there or it's a major issue, they can request a variance extension for six months. If they miss it, two years before they can apply again.
Okay.
Okay?
Good.
All right, any other questions or someone close it?
No.
Okay, then I'm going to close this case, Mr. Campabasso. There will be no decision tonight. We are going to set up a decision meeting probably within the next one to two weeks as we get schedules down. And then, as you know, you may attend a decision. You're not allowed to input any data unless the board asks for it. And then we go forward from there. Okay? Is anybody connected with the, one more, sir?
Sorry to keep interrupting or whatever, but when you have your decision made and it's probably not going to be for the next meeting?
It'll be before that.
Will you guys give, like, the butters a letter? How will we find out if this has gone through or not?
Good question. No. What you would have to do is call Rachel, call the zoning board, and ask if a meeting has been established, when it's going to be, and what time. So the burden is on you to follow through on that, but we do not send any further mail or information to the butters.
After one year, this just goes back to the way it is? It's null and void, the variance, to be correct?
Say that again, sir?
After one year, it'll go back, the variance will be null and void?
If they take no action.
Correct. Just to clarify.
Yeah, and I mean, you get, sometimes I call you, you get the gray matter, what action is.
Correct.
And really, we look at, it's not, you move a rock from A to B. That's not action.
It's significant.
It's going to be significant that there's good intention on the part of the applicant, et cetera, to begin the project and doing it. A commitment. Okay?
Thank you.
So anybody connected with this case, you're free to go.
Just a clarification of the gentleman asked question. We do mail the decision to everybody that got...
All right, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, that's what I thought you asked.
I thought you just, when we have the decision meeting.
The final decision does get mailed to everybody that received a copy of the notice of the hearing. The same people.
And it will be advertised on the website and on the line. So we do have to...
Okay, then the next case before the board is case 2021-08-01 for variance. Joanne Tavano for Zero West Broadway, construct 26 multifamily units. And we represent, I believe, Attorney Christine Tree.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I think Attorney Tree, Rachel informed me that you've had some additional data for tonight.
I did.
Okay.
So a narrative was emailed this morning, but I did print out a copy for each board member. There were two questions that I wanted to specifically answer that the board asked last meeting. The first was whether or not there was a right-of-way that existed over the parcel. So this is the narrative that I did on that. The answer is not anymore. So as you know from looking at the plan and speaking about other access, there is an old cart path that goes through the parcel back to here. And what I did was I had a great time looking back to the mid-1800s and trying to read handwritten deeds at the Registry of Deeds. It was actually very entertaining for me. But this parcel right here was originally known as the William Whitney Farm and it was owned by Lucas Baker and his family for a long period of time, and then the Ames family for a long period of time. And both the Baker and the Ames families originally owned an 88-acre farm. There was a description that was produced in 1846 that did not change until a plan was drawn in 2020. So again, had some amusement converting rods and links to feet. Despite the lack of change, there were a number of different parcels conveyed out. So I did try to look at those, but when you're looking at a cart path that goes like this, the property in the rear that is landlocked is the obvious subject for a right-of-way over this path. And tracing that parcel back to 1868, they were held in common ownership by Lucas Baker. Lucas Baker sold this off to George Sawto. And he granted a right-of-way to bring his horse teams over this parcel to access the front road. Despite that, this is no longer a problem because as of today, the petitioner owns this parcel. And once they are held in common ownership again, the right-of-ways merge and become eliminated. And I did bring a copy of the recorded deed to that parcel if the board wants to take a look. Sorry, I'll leave our one. I also did consult with Mr. Charles Menka, who's been the owner, through his wife Marie's trust, of this parcel since 2003 and other surrounding lands since 1977. His statement on this cart path was that no one has used it since the advent of the motor vehicle.
He's old, but he's not that old.
I don't know that he remembers that far.
Don't tell him I said that.
It's on record now.
Yeah. So I, to the extent that there was a right-of-way, it is merged with the rear parcel being held in common ownership. It's not an obstacle to this being anymore. I did also look at the Schaefer's deed because the Schaefer's deed does mention a right-of-way in it. But it also refers back to a 1961 plan. The Schaefer's lot and the neighboring lot share a common driveway and that's what the right-of-way in their deed refers to. The Ameses did have another property that had a cart path, but that was up here off Route 101. So to the extent that one can try to disprove a negative, I believe that we're not, I don't see any evidence there is any current right-of-way. So that was the first question.
Well, thank you right now for the research because during several meetings, the cart paths, trails, et cetera, but nobody knew really where they were and how they were tied in. So I think that's a great clarification for everyone now.
Happy to provide it.
Thank you.
Interestingly, there were many, many female owners of property in this area in the 1800s. I thought that was great for Gardner or bad for survivorship of husbands. The other question that the board asked me was why we weren't proceeding under the smart-growth planned unit division. And I wanted to address very specifically a couple of provisions that we think make it not the appropriate provision for this project. The purpose stated in that smart-growth planned unit development of the provision is to provide an alternative pattern of land development which promotes innovative design with compact mixed-use development that is convenient to a variety of transportation options. We've talked about the fact that we have COM2, we have R2, and then we have Templeton, right there. And that despite this being COM2, we believe the most appropriate use of this property is residential. And where a mixed use would be a necessary element of that kind of application, that would bring a commercial aspect into this area that we think would be more disturbing to the surrounding properties than what we're looking at. Secondly... Secondly, Smart Growth, once you get over 12 units, requires affordable housing units. We believe that the City of Gardner and the surrounding properties will benefit the most from market rate units, which is what are being described here. Whether or not it's true that affordable units have an effect on the surrounding property values, it is the perception of neighbors that the additional, the addition of the affordable units would bring down their property values. And really, what we're looking to provide to the City of Gardner is an alternative type of housing. There's not a lot of condominium units in Gardner. And these condominiums would provide an option for first-time homebuyers, for young families, for professionals, and for elder Gardner citizens who are looking to downsize but stay in Gardner. So we do think it provides a valuable option. Sorry, my throat gets a bit dry with the mask on there. I did also see, just to mention it, that there was a meeting where we were listed as open space development. This lot does not need the minimum of five acres for open space development, and then the density requirements, the lot size being no more than 8,000. It doesn't fit in with condominium dwellings. Excuse me. So again, this is a use variance. We are happy to comply with any conditions of the board. We've suggested a condition which will ensure that the use is limited to the current parcel. We have stated that we are not looking to obtain any variances on the setbacks, which, you know, at this point would not be necessary for the other two units. We were looking for clarification on the sign that was put in the front due to the difference between could you put a residential sign in a commercial, in a C. 2 district without the variance? And that was something that was conveyed at the, at the last meeting. And of course, this will go for site plan review and a thorough review before the planning board. And these details will certainly be reviewed by the, the planning board, and we can come back here for a final review after they're done. But at this point, we would ask, we think we've met the three criteria for a variance, for consideration of a variance. And so we'd ask that the board keep it under consideration.
Thank you. Hey, I'll ask my board members, you know. Same scenario here. We've been through this two or three months now, so pretty much all the issues have been raised, answered, either in favorable, unfavorable conditions. So I don't want to open up the case as to starting over. It's the same we did with the Century Way and Clark Street. Allow if someone has a question that's pertinent and new for information. But Attorney Tree has answered the questions that we did pose in the last meeting. And unless something comes up right now, I'm going to close this, this case also, and a decision will be rendered within two weeks. So first, I'll ask my members if they have any additional questions at this point in time.
No.
No.
Mike?
No.
No.
Okay, Attorney Tree, I'm going to ask a question. You gave a nice summary right there. Would it be possible to put that down in writing and submit it to the board?
Yes.
Because I think you did a great summary of everything.
I'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone who would like to ask an additional question of this case?
Robert Schaffer from Two Oakwood Lane in East Thompson, I'm going to get Butter on the west side. Has the number of units changed?
Yes, so the original plan was for 32, and it has decreased to 26.
I've heard that the Templeton portion of it is being, not cut off, but you're not developing that, or are there going to be houses, buildings in the Templeton section?
The Templeton portion contains a proposal for, I believe it's eight dwellings right here.
Mm-hmm.
The driveways are on the Gardner side of the line, and the buildings are on the Templeton side of the line. But this board can't give permission one way or the other for that. We have to go to Templeton for that. That will be a special permit hearing before the Templeton Planning Board.
Okay, but what, so what you're dealing with, with these folks is strictly the Gardner buildings, dwellings?
We have no authority in Templeton.
And I had a question just on.
Name, please.
Mary Schaffer of Butter. I think there was a discussion about traffic study and Egress Roads. Did you do anything on either of those, or request any information on that? I thought you did.
Traffic study will be conducted if we approve this. And I would say that I have to qualify, because it sounds like we are approving it. If we do approve it, it goes to the planning board. They will conduct a traffic study. They will look into, they'll, they'll hire somebody, or you will hire somebody, and they will look at the traffic study. But it's not under the purview of this board at this time. Okay?
I understand.
Sir, has your question been answered now?
For now, with the planning board, I guess.
Okay, so Attorney Tree, you'll give a summary of your recap, and, and I'm going to close tonight's hearing, and we'll look forward to doing a decision going forward within a couple of weeks. That will take care, so anybody connected with this case, you're free to go. And of course, we could stay and see what else goes on. We'll just take a five-minute recess. Next case before the board is going to be Wayne Brasco for 120 Grant Street. And I have a letter in here. I actually have two letters in here. I'm going to read the first one. It's ZBA case 2021-11-02, Florida Mass Properties, 120 Grant Street. To Raymond Lefon, Chairman, Zoning Board of Appeals regarding the zoning appeal for special permit to run a three-family dwelling at 120 Grant Street. I'd like to inform you that at this current time, we have only received one new application for an electrical permit. No further permits have been filed, and none of them completed or inspected for cold and safety violation. As stated in the previous letter, Mr. Brasco has permits open for roof and repair work to portraits still open. Building permits for internal work, including kitchens, bathrooms, and smoke detectors, have yet to be applied for, even though the work is already completed. Photos are attached to this letter, which were posted on reality, orrealty.com in September 2021. As no significant changes have occurred since this bill, since the public hearing, I believe it would be in the best interest of all parties at this time to Mr. Brasco withdraw his application without prejudice. This would give the applicant time to complete all work needed to the property and reapply at a later date. We're still waiting for a $150 continuation fee from the last meeting, which would need to be received before the case is to be heard. Do not hesitate to contact me should you need further assistance. Roland Jean, Building Commissioner, Zoning Enforcement Officer. Rachel, last one thing, has that been updated? Are we still owed 150?
Well, he continued again, so we got, we've got the one for 32, so I've got the letter that we received this morning, and there's another one in the mail now for.
Okay.
I thought he was coming in with checks.
Yeah, and then he called and said he's not.
Okay, next one, Florida Mass Properties LLC, 295 Waltham Street, Lexington, Mass. January 14th, and it's timestamped January 14th. To Mrs. Rachel Taylor, Secretary of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Care of the Gardner Building Department, 115 Pleasant Street, Room 101, Gardner, Mass. 01440. Regarding Zoning Board of Appeals hearing, request for continuance. Florida Mass Properties LLC, 295 Wall Street, Waltham Street, Lexington, Mass. Good afternoon, Mrs. Taylor. I, Wayne F. Brasco, Jr., Manager of the Limited Liability Company, excuse me, Florida Mass Properties LLC, would respectfully request the continuance of our hearings scheduled for 21st of December, and then cordially granted by the board to be continued to January 18th, 2022, meeting of the Gardner Zoning Board of Appeals. I respectfully ask the Chairman of the Board and all board members to grant us an additional hearing at their next meeting in February 2022. The reason for such request is to continue to follow up at the Building Commissioner's office and correct any issues raised by the Building Department. We would like to satisfy every concern of the Commissioner prior to being heard at the hearing. Due to the scheduling of our third-party contractors involved in our renovations at the location, we have been delayed in our progress addressing, addressing all the Building Commissioner's concerns. Please note that the building is presently unoccupied, and safety of the public or, or any residents is not a concern from, from this delay. This delay is only a third-party scheduling conflict. I, as well as one of our contractors contracted COVID, which further delayed our progress. I have been insured, I have been insured by a third-party contractor that we have been placed on their schedule to address any concerns of the Commissioner. If we foresee any further scheduling delays, we will withdraw without prejudice at the February meeting if, if this continuance is so granted. We respectfully request that the additional time to ensure that the city is satisfied on all concerns. Thank you for your consideration. Wayne F. Brasco, Manager of LLC, Florida Mass Properties LLC. Telephone number 781-330-9941. So what we have before is, Mr. Brasco would have wanted to get a, obtain the continuance to our February meeting with the condition that if he does not fulfill the requirements of all permits, et cetera, then he will withdraw without prejudice till everything is rectified and approved. I'd just state, if he does not get everything approved, does not ask for withdrawal, then the board looks at either granting it or declining his application, one of those two choices. But I is assured, Mr. Jean, that he is going to be ready for the February meeting. So I would like to recommend that we do vote and grant him the continuance to the February meeting, conditioned upon that all permits have been submitted and approved or being worked on at that point, and he pays any outstanding fees that may be there. So that's my recommendation.
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? None? All those in favor?
No.
Aye? Okay, Randy said aye. All those opposed? No opposition? Continuance granted to February for Mr. Brasco in 120 Grand Street. All right. We'll just take a couple-minute recess again here, so, because we have some minutes that We have, okay, minutes from, I'm sure everybody, I know Rachel sent them out, and everybody's had an opportunity to read them, and I believe all the corrections, et cetera, and adjustments have been made. Correct, Rachel?
Yep.
Okay, we have minutes, I'll try to take them as a whole. We have minutes from November 13th, 2021. It's the West Broadway Open Space Development. And this is when we visited the property with Attorney Tree and the applicant and viewed the property. Next one is minutes of the Zoning Board of Appeals, November 16th. And it's sitting, I was sitting with Randy, Mike, and myself. Get the, get the paper off. And it's on Harbor Classic Homes, and variance, well, Wayne Brasco also. Next minute, Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, November 26th. That was another meeting. It was a site visit through Sherman Street. Another set of minutes, Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, December 21st. That's it.
Make a motion, we approve all four minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? No opposition, minutes approved. Okay. Do we have any further business before the board this evening?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, you don't need to, you have no discussion on a motion to adjourn. I keep telling you that, but you do it all the time.
I know.